How you doing? Like, my client?
At the big train station.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone from the public wish to make any comments? We are gonna have several public hearings, so if it's pertaining to that, if you could hold off, but anything else, now would be a time for you to make any statements or comments? Okay, none in the audience? Anything online, Rose?
No one's online.
Excellent. Okay. We have a regular meeting minutes from October 7th. Anyone have any questions, comments, or motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support? Any questions? Roll call.
Gasson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
Klauser?
Yes.
Kendrick?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so we're gonna start the public hearings. We have three of them tonight. First one is payment in lieu of parking for 223 South Main Street. Nick, is that something you're gonna introduce?
I will, sir. So at our last meeting, we set a public hearing for the city.
Yes, it is a public hearing, yes.
Yep. For, um, for the request to have pay in lieu of three spaces. So if you went out and looked at the site, this is in the old Fieldstone Winery site. A lot of people thought that was a restaurant, but technically, back in 15, when we set the standard for the parking management district, that was a retail place because Patrick could make wine there and sell it, but it wasn't a full-on restaurant. So the parking count was assigned at 1 to 200. One space was required for every 200 gross square feet of area because it was retail. A gentleman came in to open up Mocha Cafe. That, by definition, according to the building code, becomes a restaurant, so they need, with no alcohol, so they need one space, whatever, 150 feet, made it a three-space short deficit. So unfortunately, we couldn't do a study on the lot behind it because it was gone for the last two months as we reconstructed Lot 12 there. We have the old history on that lot. Again, daytime use, 68%, I believe it was, that was vacant. At night, it gets filled up. Then you also have the Brunch House lot, which is across the street, we call it that. During the day, again, not packed, morning a little bit, evening, a lot. So, again, staff looked at that deficiency for three spaces. We felt it was supportable. Fieldstone Winery probably had a higher occupancy than these folks would even have, so it was a wash on this one. We know that we told you every time we would look at each lot in every space, not just 1, 2, or 3, or 30. So we looked at it and evaluated each one in this case. So our recommendation is to grant the three-space waiver after a public...
Thank you, Nick. Is anyone here from the petitioner?
Yes.
Just, I just wanted to know if you're here. Yeah, okay. Any questions from the commission to Nick before we open the public hearing? Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing at 7:05. Anybody in the audience would like to speak to this item? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing at 7:05. All right, we have before us a recommendation from administration on three spaces with adequate spaces nearby. Any questions regarding that? Do you wanna hear from the petitioner at all? Okay. I entertain a motion.
I will make a motion for approval for payment in lieu of three additional spaces at 223 South Main Street.
To move forward to the city council?
To move forward, yes.
Okay.
Support.
Support. So we have a motion to move this forward to the city council and support. Any question on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
So because it's three or 10 or less, they don't get the option to go to city council? They have to write a check for $3,000 into the parking fund before they get a C-Lo.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, we have a motion.
Chairman Gasson?
Yes.
Chairman Gasson, Vidya here. This is a public hearing, so if you would like to seek any public comments?
We did that part already.
He did that.
For this particular case? Okay, sorry, I thought it was for general, any case.
No worries.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take a roll call on that motion, please.
Gasson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
Klauser?
Yes.
Kendrick?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Next public hearing is consideration of 6:30 Main Street, Paul's on Main, for facade modifications, a canopy, a pergola, and some other facade improvements. Vidya, would you introduce that and cover your report, please?
Yes, Commissioner Gasson, thank you. The request before the planning commission tonight is a request from Paul's on Main Restaurant to make certain facade modifications. The restaurant is located on the east side of Main Street, just north of Old Town Road and Pain Creek Trail, and is zoned B1, which is the general business district. Restaurant uses, sit-down restaurants are principal permitted use in the B1 district, and outdoor dining is a special exception use. The property was previously approved for both uses. Because they are making a facade modification, they do need site plan approval from the planning commission. They appeared before the planning commission for a preliminary hearing on October 7th, and they were scheduled for a public hearing at tonight's meeting. With regard to access and circulation, the site fronts on Main Street, and there is no change proposed as part of this facade modification proposal to the entrance of Main Street. The sidewalks are also not being changed. The building has an existing concrete sidewalk along its main street frontage, and also a concrete walkway to the main entrance to the restaurant, which is barrier-free accessible. The plan does not alter existing parking requirement or the parking that's provided on the site. With regard to facade modifications, the main modifications proposed are the replacement of all the red and the red and white striped awnings on the existing building. They are all going to be replaced with a dark bronze-colored metal awning. The plan also proposes the addition of an open operable pergola on top of the main entrance. This is to provide shelter to patrons when they are entering or they are exiting the building. The applicant previously appeared before you and also stated at the time that the brick and the cement on the building, the cement boards, will be painted, as will the cornice on top of the building. That is not labeled on the elevations, but I just wanted to summarize that that is also part of the improvements proposed to the facade. No new lighting or visible light fixtures on the exterior are proposed. The landscaping is also to remain unaltered. They are replacing the sign that is along the street frontage. It currently is red to match the existing awnings. It will be made into a dark bronze background to match the building. The sign must be submitted to the city administration for permitting to ensure it meets the signed requirements before it is installed. Based upon our review of the proposal, we believe the facade modifications are intended to give a fresh and modern appearance to the building while at the same time providing protection to the patrons with an improved awning system for the entire building. Our recommendation is for the planning commission to grant site plan approval for the proposed facade modifications, subject to the submission of signage for administrative approval prior to its installation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vidya. Any questions of the planner? Vidya, I have one question. You mentioned a couple items that are not noted on the plans, some painting, et cetera. Are you gonna require that in a formal submittal so it's part of the record?
If the planning commission makes note of our review letter as being part of the approval process, it will automatically become a condition on the plan. That should be adequate, Mr. Gasson.
Thank you. Okay, is an applicant in the audience also? Okay, excellent. Okay, any questions from the commission before we open the public hearing? Okay, public hearing is now opened at 7:10. Anyone from the public in the audience wish to speak on this item? Rose, anybody in the virtual world?
No, no one's online.
Okay. 7:11, we close public hearing? Okay, is there anything the applicant would like to address the commission on for this?
So we had one person calling, my wife, make sure they're still gonna have Oopah.
We can make that a condition. Anything, would the applicant like to make a comment or presentation to the commission? Okay, keep it simple. Any conversation amongst us? Looking further? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve?
Yes, motion to approve.
And defer signage to administration?
Yes.
Second?
All support.
Excellent, okay, we got a motion, we got a second. Roll call.
Gasson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
Klauser?
Yes.
Kendrick?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Excellent, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. Next public hearing is 500 East Second Street. We've reviewed the site plan previously, and, yeah, I'm just gonna let it go at that. I don't know if we reviewed that previously. Vidya, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request before the planning commission, this item is the Rara Building, the Rochester Avon Recreation Authority Building, that is located at 500 East Second Street. It is located on the south side of the street in the I-1 Industrial District. The applicant's proposal is to add an awning, a blue-color awning. It's an L-shaped building. The applicant's proposal is to add a blue-color awning above the main entrance into the building, where the vehicle drop-off and pickup area is for children and other adults who are attending classes within this facility. Commercial, indoor commercial recreation use is a special exception in the district, and Rara has appeared before the planning commission on multiple occasions over the years to get site plan approval for this facility and for the abutting building to its west, when they were choosing to expand their facilities in 2016. They did appear before the planning commission for a preliminary hearing on October 7th, and were scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Access and circulation to the building is remaining unchanged. The sketch, this is basically a 42-foot-by-16-foot-wide blue metal awning. The underside of the awning is to be provided with wood ceiling. It is intended as a cover, and it will have recessed lights in it to provide illumination to the area beneath the canopy for people to wait over there. One of the concerns we had previously expressed was the fact that the barrier-accessible or handicap parking is right in front of the canopy. We wanted to make sure that the snow does not slide off the metal roof and fall over the barrier-free accessible ramp and block wheelchair access. The applicant has noted in this letter that's included in your packet that they will be installing snow bars, which are basically a metal rim that goes at the edge of the roof to prevent the snow from sliding straight down, so that way they will maintain clear barrier-free access itself. No changes to the landscaping or signage are proposed on the site. The one thing the city did bring to our attention is that the site has got several existing floodlights. These floodlights are not permitted under the city's lighting ordinance, and they have been a source of nuisance. So our recommendation is for the planning commission to approve the requested site plan for addition of the blue awning roof cover, subject to all existing floodlights on the site being replaced with new downward-directed and shielded fixtures as required by the ordinance. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vidya. Any questions from the commission at this point? Is there someone in the audience? An applicant, excellent. Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing. Any questions, comments from the audience? Rose, anybody on virtual?
No one's online.
Okay, well, let me just do that. Open at 7:15, close at 7:50. Okay, back to the council or commission. Any questions regarding that? Where we are? Vidya, could you tell us, or maybe administration, how many lights there are that we would, applicant would need to address or change?
Mr. Gasson, Mr. Banda would probably know a more accurate number, because he brought it to my attention that there were too many floodlights on the site. So, Nick, if you could please help with that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's four, and I will tell you that Mr. Robert Partalides, who lives and represents the condos above, was very appreciative. He couldn't make the meeting, but he was urging that his condo association at night can see those at night, and they'd been there for a long time, and they were okay when they put them in, but talking to David, they're willing to do that, which will... Part of it was, because I think there were not pole lights right in the parking lot, so it kinda flooded out over the lot. There's better ways to do that now. So the condo association at the top of the hill would be very appreciative of that being a condition.
Any applicants? Obviously, it sounds like you guys talked about it, and you're okay with that. Excellent. Okay, commission?
So moved.
Got a motion to move ahead? Support anyone?
Support.
Support. Okay. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Gasson?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
Klauser?
Yes.
Kendrick?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Excellent. Look forward to seeing that improvement. On considerations, we have a site plan for 339 East Street, which we've seen several times before. It looks like we got some additional information at our desk here today, or our stations. So we'll look forward to hearing a little bit more about that, but we'll first do the report from Vidya.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Gasson. The proposal before you tonight is something that I've reviewed multiple times before the planning commission. The main question that came up at the last review meeting was with regard to, if you give me one minute, I'm going to pull up the building architecture on the screen. The couple of points that were under discussion by the planning commission, one was with regard to the building architecture and how it fits in with the neighborhood in which it is located. The zoning, the site is located in the CBD, the Central Business District, that does permit flat-roof buildings. The ordinance section that relates to architecture in the CBD basically is written broadly to say that the materials used on the building exterior need to be compatible or in line with that of the neighboring buildings. In this case, the applicant has revised the architectural materials and the elevations several times in response to the planning commission's feedback received right from the preliminary level in order to adjust the color of the brick to a more neutral color tone palette, and also the metal panels, so that the building blends in in the area where it is located. This was, however, a point of discussion at the last meeting. However, the last time the applicant appeared before you, the main reason the project was tabled was pending the planning commission receiving additional information from the city with regard to the payment in lieu of request from the subject proposal. So I believe the city manager was going to bring before you certain information on what exactly, how many payment in lieu of spaces were possibly approved, how many spaces are there in the existing public lots on the east side of Main Street, and therefore, is there enough availability of spaces in order to grant the significant payment in lieu of that is being requested by this applicant? So I will defer at this point to city manager Banda to provide the information that the planning commission had last requested.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Banda?
Actually, Jeremy worked with our new park enforcement officer, manager, Dave Custer, went out and did a two-week study. He's gonna go over that. There were no other pay in lieu of in that area, on that most, either the deck or the parking lot, so at this point. But Jeremy, if you wanna go over our findings?
Yeah, so I met with police chief and the new parking enforcement officer, or manager, I don't know his official title. But so, we met, we talked about just kind of the project scope in general, and then they set up a 10-day study between October 15th and October 28th, where the officer would go to both sites and count cars three times a day for every single day. So that's what this spreadsheet is that is included in the packet. I do want to note that there is a typo to, if you go to the last one, it was the percentage of parking used. That's the percentage of, it should say, percentage of parking that's vacant. So it's not the used, it's just misworded. So that is something of note. But at the end of the study, they found that 71% of vacancy rate in the, in the lot, or in the deck, and then there was a 43% vacancy rate in the lot. So the deck's a lot less used than the, than the lot is, and I think that's just perception of parking decks. But that's kind of where the numbers fell to, for the parking study.
Right, and if I may add, as we went through the thought process, so again, split, mixed use, right? Office during the day, restaurant at night. So when, at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, when people stop working, there will be nobody in the office building. So we looked at, that's why we didn't do a study at night, to look at what the spots were, because we know during the evening, when restaurants are going, that parking-adjacent lot is full. The east deck, we still haven't got a full load on it. We do know the grams coming, things like that, so there's other things that will put pressure on that lot eventually. But alls we can do is go by what we experienced today in the last month, and that was indicative of the previous data that we have from our old system. Our new system will be able to be much more efficient, but it just got put in a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I can talk about that as well.
Yeah, we did that, yeah, go ahead. We did it manually instead.
Yeah, so we did it manually, just so we didn't have to wait for the system to catch up to itself. We thought that this was a much more efficient way to do it in a short period of time. But looking forward, we do have a GIS person that we work with from time to time, especially the fire department, and they are going to be taking the raw data that's not really in a digestible format, and then putting it through a GIS system to where we can use it for, and more of a dashboard, and they'll give us graphs and everything like this. We probably won't be getting like an every-single-day update, but it's something that the parking manager can put in it on a Friday, it will update itself, and then we can use it when we need to, or we can always export if we need something more instantaneously. So that's coming. I got confirmation that he was starting to work on it last week, will start, probably finish it this week, and then it will just get more and more, I guess, accurate as time goes on, as it gets fed more data.
And that was what you had all asked for, city council and the DDA board also. Overall, look at the entire system. We took it to the PAC, the Parking Advisory Committee. Same thing, it's good information to have. Chief George now, every Friday sends out something, I think city council gets in the manager's report, about the state, or the, how our parking's actually, I'm sorry, the parking enforcement's going. So this is just the next evolution of getting better data through this GIS system that we're investing in, so that you all have a decision. Because I think the mayor put it that it doesn't matter if it's 1 or 30, at some point you're gonna hit saturation, and what is that? You all will decide that, the policymakers, but right now, the evidence is not that we're there. We remember back in 2012, when the business community came and said, "You don't have enough parking, we need to build decks." So we've never had a complaint about that. There are times, and we've talked about this at the last couple meetings, in the evening, you drive around a bit to find a parking spot, but again, if you drive out a bit, you'll find a parking spot. So that was our report.
Sounds gonna be, sounds like it's gonna be a great tool. You mentioned that we're gonna be able to know if it's saturated or not. I was gonna ask you before you said that, is at what point, what is the tipping point for you to say, "Ooh, this is questionable, and that we need to do something more than what we did here?" I guess that's to be determined, but I feel pretty comfortable with those numbers, but...
So...
And obviously, you do too, which is important to us.
Exactly. And what it was back in '12 was the business community coming saying, it started off with the employees are taking all the good spots. So once we figured that out, pushed them deeper into the lots, then it became just pure numbers. Some of it, we had just started to change, the Chapman House opened, a bunch of different places opened that seemed to be heavier influence in the evening, and that started to make people frustrated, and it was, it was still a tough sell, because during the day, we never hit even 30%. But we're not necessarily a daytime community, we're more of an evening community. So we wanted to make sure that it didn't become a business deterrent, and when people were being deterred from opening up a more robust business, we knew that was time to take a look at it, and it worked out. And the business community, actually, the mayor will remember this, and some of you will, that when we first did the bond debt for three years, the businesses paid a proportion of 25%, and then as we went on to make that bond payment, until we knew the parking system would pay for itself eventually. It pays for itself on a daily basis, but not for the capital improvement that we have to do in the decks. So we're, we have a long-range CIP plan to replace the decks. We did lot, I'm sorry, to replace the parking lots. We've done massive amount of work on the decks that should get us through another eight years. So we've done the coatings, and last thing we have to do is redo these pucks that are in the building that shift around a little bit, but now we're systematically going through the worst lots based on Paser ratings about how the surface is, and then replacing those lots. This year it was 12, next year, I think, 10, just down here, by city hall is being looked at, and we're gonna look at all of them as we go on, so try and make it work.
We're gonna probably handle these as two different items, the site plan as well as the pay in lieu of. But you can continue with your report, Vidya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will put the site plan back on the screen for the planning commission.
While you're doing that, I'll ask the commission, was any questions regarding what we just heard regarding parking?
Just one. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Jeremy, I've got just a question. I wanna make sure I understand the numbers and the daily parking count that were provided to us. Looking at the east deck, you've got Tuesday through Thursday, we've got a seven-day week here. It looks like the parking capacity on the east deck is 235 cars, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the daily average is listed there, and it ranges from, it looks like 141 on the lowest to, looks like 177 on the highest, is that correct?
Yes, it averages at 166 across the board.
Okay, so looking at the numbers, extrapolating them out, it looks like with respect to that east deck, which is directly across from the subject property, looks like the percentage of parking used is at most 40% on one particular day, is that right?
Yeah, that's what the...
And then at the lowest, it would be, it looks like 25% somewhere roughly, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I understood the math. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions?
I have some.
Yes.
One clarification about, Nick, what you said in the beginning about how there weren't other payment in lieu of nearby?
In that lot.
But didn't we just approve Boss Barber, which is on the same street?
They extinguished that now. They, they were seven short, and then they paid, so they paid up.
Okay.
They don't have that anymore.
And there's no other...
Right, they bought a park, they bought a parking lot so they could not have to pay the rest of their money, because they had bought them at 7,500 a space, so that one went away, but that, yep.
I think the closest one would have been the Old Eye Chilling, the one, the one space on Second Street, but then there's a few parking lots before you get to this one.
So we, when we looked at that one, we said the upper parking lot, that was the closest proximity to that one, so they didn't go into this lot, it's a block away.
And then why didn't we capture data on Saturday and Sunday? I'm guessing just staff and who?
The, yeah, probably staffing, but then also most office buildings on open Saturday, Sunday.
Well, I also wonder, so we captured the office time, but like you said, we're nighttime downtown, and the majority of the 30 spots that the developer's looking for, my understanding of our calculation is because there is a restaurant on the bottom. So why wouldn't we have captured then, when the restaurant will be at capacity, like the nighttime hours?
That's fair. Because, the answer is because the former Moon River was grandfathered in for like 19 spaces, so they're gone, so they get credit for those spaces that were credited to the Moon River as a retailer.
So the 30 spaces is only 11 spaces then? If it's 19 grandfathered in?
No, it's because they added more square foot. They only had, Moon River just had a residence on the upper floor, so that was just two, plus their retail. So the net here ends up being thirty. So.
And the lot behind it, if I'm looking at this correctly, it does get up to like eighty percent capacity during the day on Tuesdays. And do we know, is that mostly staff, or do they park somewhere else?
That's good. It's, right now, it's, yeah, appears to be permit parking. You can see who comes when he, that's why we did the early morning, so you can see who's here first. Now that we don't charge in the meters until eleven, it gets a little longer. Before, when that was nine, you knew, you had anybody that got there before, now it's probably employee. Now we don't charge until eleven. So people are, if you're only working half a day or whatever, they'll pay the extra hour. So that was why we did that one.
Thanks.
So, yes, Mr. Mayor?
So why, why didn't we do it at night, just because we didn't think to do that?
Yeah. I mean, I, it wasn't relevant to this, and we had.
But the restaurants open at night, right?
Right. But that was covered by the parking, the restaurant, of the Rita that was there prior, previously. So.
Maybe if I break it down, in, in total, the building requires it. But in nighttime use, the previous allotment from Moon River covers the restaurant requirement. If you kind of separate the day from the night, the night need is met based on the previous approval.
Thank you.
If I got that right.
Correct.
Okay, Vidya, back to you.
Thank you, Chairman Gasson. So going back to the basic site plan, so the request from the applicant is to construct a three-story building with a restaurant on the first floor and office space on the two floors above. Restaurants and taverns where patrons are seated while they are inside is a principal permitted use in the district, as is the use of administrative offices on the upper floors. With regard to access and circulation, as you can see from the site plan on your screen, the property is built, the proposed building occupies almost lot line to lot line, except on the west side of the building, where there is a three-foot offset. And the reason for this offset is because of existing electric meters, utilities, and a utility easement that runs along the west side of the property. So they cannot build on top of it, which is the reason for leaving this three-foot gap. The site is at the southwest corner of East Street and East Second Street, and it has direct access from the street itself. With regard to pedestrian parking, their pedestrian access, there are existing sidewalks along both street frontages. Based upon previous discussions at the Planning Commission meeting, there are two entrances to this restaurant. One is at the southeast corner of the building, and one is at the northwest. And the applicant has adjusted the grades such that both entrances are going to be barrier-free accessible, as was presented last time. With regard to dumpster, the applicant proposes to use the DDA dumpsters that are integrated along with the parking deck itself. Now, the proposed architecture of the building, as you can see, I'm going to zoom in a little bit on it. The proposed architecture of the building has got brick with a limestone base and a metal panel wall system, and it's got a metal coping on top, which has got lights that are fixed on the underside of the soffit. The corner of the building, as you can see, has predominantly got metal coping on here. The applicant did modify the colors in order, as I previously mentioned, to give it a more neutral color palette that could blend in with the buildings that are next to it, rather than stand out too much. So the abutting building to the west right now is a two-story building. Because there is a possibility that in the future, if this building is also built up, with the minimal separation distance between the buildings, the proposed building cannot have walls on the west facade. We had recommended that the applicant create four-window-like appearance, either through the use of spandrel glass or through creative arrangement of brick and herringbone or other patterns, which will give the illusion of a window or an architectural detail without really being a true window. That would break up the facade, which would essentially is a three-floor, three-story brick wall. And the applicant has worked on it. We had made certain recommendations in our review letter. If you can see our review letter, we have certain patterns put in there. I would like the applicant to answer that and address that issue once again to the Planning Commission's satisfaction at this time. The architectural elevations with regard to lighting, note architectural wall stonuses on the building facade itself. These are decorative lighting. There is existing street light along the frontage, and the applicant is also proposing soffit lighting to architecturally enhance the building. As to landscaping, the applicant had previously, when originally the plan was proposed, there was no concrete planter shown over here. The existing Moon River Company did have a landscape bed along the frontage. We had recommended that the applicant integrate and create the same landscaping bed along the frontages of both, so that it creates an indoor-outdoor kind of wide for the restaurant itself, since the restaurant is going to have windows along the side. The revised plan, based upon the Planning Commission's recommendation, the applicant at this time shows a proposed planter that will be planted with shrubs. They will still maintain a five-foot-wide clear sidewalk, which is the minimum required for a public sidewalk, to make it navigable. With regard to signage, new signage is proposed on the building facade, and will have to be submitted to the city for administrative approval prior to installation. Other than that, the applicant basically has been in discussion with the Planning Commission, especially with regard to parking, where, as was mentioned, they are grandfathered in for a certain number of spaces that was based on previous retail use and apartment use of the building, which is now translating into a restaurant use that serves alcohol, along with office use, resulting in the need for thirty additional parking spaces, for which the applicant is seeking payment in lieu of. Our recommendation is for the Planning Commission to approve the site plan for Paulo Longo Restaurant to be located at three-three-nine East Street, subject to the conditions that are listed in our MACHNA review letter dated August twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-four. Upon the applicant finding the proposed, upon the Planning Commission finding the architecture proposed to be satisfactory to meet the ordinal standards, and also granting approval for recommending to the City Council approval for thirty spaces payment in lieu of party. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Vidya.
Thank you.
We do have some material received tonight. Did you also get a copy of that?
No.
Uh, I'm, no, I did not.
Then you could address several of the points you were making regarding material, facade material, and previous comments on, all called style or character.
Mr. Gasson, I do want to point out that this material is not submitted by the developer. This is material is submitted by a person that I assume would want to speak tonight about it.
That's very interesting.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think it was sent in by a citizen.
Wow. Okay. We need more of those. Is there someone from the applicant here tonight? Okay. And just curiosity, is the, is the interested citizen here tonight too? Excellent. Okay. So at this time, we normally hear from the applicant in response to some of the comments the planner's made. So here's your chance to come up and address that, and for us to ask you some questions as well. While he's coming up, is any questions from the Commission to the planner on her report? You'll have a chance in a minute again, too. If you'd say your name and address, that'd be wonderful.
Good evening. Paulo Longo, I live on twelve, ten-twelve Night Creek, Rochester. And I'm here to answer any question. And we talked about herringbone and three-story, and, you know, we confirmed that, that we're gonna do a design, an herringbone brick on that side. We had the planners on, on the east side, East Street. And I don't know if there was any other questions on that. We're excited to, to move on, and hopefully move on, with your approval.
Well, I'd say you're getting closer. If nothing further, I'm gonna bring you back to the Commission before I ask for explanation of what we received tonight. So any questions about what we received in terms of the submittal that we could offer questions back or discuss ourselves?
Just to clarify, there were no modifications made from the last submission to tonight?
No, there, there were, yeah, I mean, there were some suggestion about, you know, the brick face on the west side, and we confirm it, that it's gonna be a design, a three-story design, with herringbone, you know, like duplicate like windows that we can't put on that side.
I think you'll see that on sheet A three zero four. There's an impression of some kind of brick change there. I don't know if it describes it too well. Any others? Mr. Bachman?
I have some questions. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the applicant. So, I'll start with the, the coursework. So you mentioned the west facade. Commissioner Lord, who's not here tonight to speak, I thought he brought up a great suggestion for the south side to sort of break that up, because it's highly visible as you drive down East Street heading north. And he had suggested adding a herringbone style in between those windows to sort of break up that facade. You seem to be open to that.
Yes.
And so you are. Okay. So that would be part of the adjustments. Okay. I think Vidya may have referenced, I think it's section two-one-one-eight of the zoning ordinance, the architectural guidelines for the Central Business District. And, and one of the sections talks about windows as a percentage of the facade. And I can't tell looking at the drawing, I wonder if maybe the applicant knows, or if the city already knows. But the maximum would be sixty percent of the facade area, which to me means looking at one given elevation at a time, as opposed to taking the aggregate building into consideration, if I make sense when I create that distinction. So I, I wonder if, for example, on that south facade, excuse me, the, the east facade, do we know if, if the windows exceed that sixty percent maximum?
Vidya, could you comment on both of those, if there's a aggregate accounting or per elevation, and what the east elevation might be?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Bachman. If you can see on your screen, I believe I have the east facade, and this is the east facade, I'm sorry, this is the east, and this would be the north facade. These are the primary facades facing the public right-of-way, and they do have sixty percent glazing. With regard to the south facade, this would be the south facade, we, we did not emphasize as much on glazing, because through previous experience, when we have required excessive windows, the applicants have had to come back before the Planning Commission, because addition or placement of windows ended up conflicting with stairways, with the location of elevators, and other utility and functional elements within the building itself. This happened on two different site plans, for which they had to come back to get the plans changed, because functionally it did not work. But in this case, the facades that face the public rights of way do have the required amount of glazing.
So, so just to clarify, it, 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 it looks to me visually that it exceeds the sixty percent maximum. Are we saying that it, it meets the, the letter of the ordinance? It complies?
So, the way we apply the ordinance is, the Central Business District is a district that is intended to encourage pedestrian interaction. The intent is for pedestrians who are on the sidewalk to be able to see the activity inside. So we view that sixty percent as actually, when we have applied it in the history of the past decade, plus when we have reviewed every project that has come, is certain minimum amount of glazing on the building, rather than a maximum amount of glazing. So in this case, with it being a restaurant on the ground floor and office buildings, we did not restrict the amount of glass or glazing on the building. Rather, we encouraged making the building more open and visible, so that it doesn't look like a closed three-story brick facade.
Okay. I, I guess I'll leave it there. I do have one other, I appreciate that, Vidya. Thank you. I do have one other question for the applicant. So at the, at the last planning meeting, last month's meeting, we, we talked about the ACM metal coping that you put on there. We asked, the Commission asked if there were any other examples in the Central Business District. And I think the example that was provided was Bill Fox Chevrolet, which is in Rochester Hills. I can't think of, as I sit here, any other examples of ACM metal coping in the CBD.
The building on Main and Parkdale, that's got metal coping.
Romeo. So I thi, I think that, I think that's north of where the CBD district ends, if I'm not mistaken. I'm, I'm wondering if there's any examples within the CBD that you're aware of.
I thought that was one of them. I think the building before has got some metal coping also. But we can change the metal coping with different material. It, it, that's not a must for us. You know, we were thinking about putting, you know, like wood or some, you know, more feasible for the, you know, if that's, that's the old up on it, you know, that's not a problem, you know, like. And regarding the windows, I, I was saying, you know, there's a lot of buildings in Main Street that, that's all windows, you know, like, for example, the New Antara Building. It's right off of Main Street, that's all windows. There, there's no even brick in there, barely.
Are you referring to that condominium building on Romeo?
For, for rent?
Oh, greens.
I think that was mostly original openings. Those weren't created. They were windows, and they're still windows.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, that's, that's pretty normal.
Comparable example. I, Mr. Bachman, I think there's an example of maybe the re-walled office building has ACM on it.
Okay.
I think. And it's, it's not a predominant material used in downtown, but you might find it in other places. This is less traditional. I think maybe that's where you were heading with it. I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but it's less traditional to see that on, in, in the downtown, our downtown. Other questions?
I do have two.
Is there some?
Thank you for the, the rendering again. It's a nice-looking building. I haven't seen it in a couple of months, due to my own fault. Two questions. One, the roof, is that where you intend to put air handling units for furnace and cooling, heating and cooling of the building, or will those be internal to the structure?
The, the heating will be internal, the air conditioning will be on top.
Okay. In your renderings.
That's not mine. I'm sorry.
Okay. The ones on, the ones on the board, are, are we able to see them from a hundred feet away from your building?
No.
Okay.
Oh, this would say we'd have to screen if you could.
Correct. And I, I would appreciate that if we followed through with that. And the other is, how will the building drain? Will you have exterior downspouts attached to the outside of your beautiful building, or will they be some other way?
Internal downspouts.
Okay.
Just to follow up on that question regarding screening, Mr. Manager, you mentioned you would require, we would require it. Is that something that's done after it's built, and you would make that determination, or do we want to see it in advance of that, so it's not a construction change?
Normally, if, there's a couple of ways that the building apartments always look at that. If there, depends on the materials, if they're right in the middle. Obviously, from higher, you're gonna be able to see it. But it's, it's, it's adjusted when it's built. So a condition would be, if appropriate, screening would be put on. It could be tight to the building. If it was a whole parapet changed to hide those, that's a whole different story. That would come back here.
Come back. Okay.
Absolutely.
Other questions of the applicant? I'm sorry, Ms. Murphy. I had a couple more technical, kind of where Mr. Stone was heading with some of these, you know, little things. Looking at the site plan, let me see if there's a number to the sheet that I have. It is one of one. So it, it lacked a lot of information that I would like to see to really understand what's going on. And using that, looking at some of the imaging, and I'll just scroll up and tell you what the image is, the sheet right above the site plan, Vidya, if you'd scroll up. There's an image of the building and the planter, et cetera. And you can see the sidewalk there, what looks, I don't know, five-feet sidewalk, and that's what Vidya mentioned. And then when you scroll back down to the site plan, it shows a walkway of about thirteen feet. And I'm, when I see that contradiction, I wonder what's not right. And maybe you guys covered this in previous meetings, but it leaves me wondering. And, and maybe you guys covered this in previous meetings, but it leaves me wondering. So I dug a little deeper, just to understand, and I looked at the floor plans and then the lot dimensions, which on the site plan are forty feet on the north and south dimension and fifty-nine feet eight or roughly eight inches on the west and sixty feet on the east. Um, and where I'm heading with this is I'm, I'm thinking that your building is overplanned when I scroll down to the elevation sheets. You have a lot of projections in these things, we're talking about these ACM, uh, I think, Vidia referred to them as copings. Uh, they're projecting over the property line. We, we're okay on certain things of projecting over setbacks, but not property lines. Correct me if I'm, uh, out of line there, Mr. Manager, but on three sides of the building, your building projects over the property line, which, and I go, and I'm going back to then where I started, the site plan, it's not clear enough to me, and maybe my fellow commissioners are having the same question, is where is, I just see a dark line and does that really represent your building footprint or built building?
Uh, Narke that is not here, unfortunately, uh, to answer that question, but we all have to stay in the property line. Regarding the changes, there were some changes about the sidewalk. When we met previously, you know, and, um, we were gonna move the sidewalk to create another planter in, uh, in, on the east street to create a, a planter in there. Uh, but the property line, yeah, the building will fit the property line, it will not, you know, overhang the property line. I can, I can guarantee that.
Yeah, I think the city would be this along the same lines too. I, I just think at the planning level, I'm looking at information that contradicts enough to me that, uh, I have big questions about moving past tonight with this, just for those technical reasons.
Yeah.
I mean, there's the other, you know, the building imaging, et cetera, but, uh, I think that, that's a big thing to look at.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, Vidia, can you, when you reviewed this, how did, obviously has to stay within the property lines, but I don't know how you looked at that.
So Commissioner Gasson is correct and there's some discrepancy in the renderings provided because the first time the applicant has appeared multiple times, the first time there were no planters shown anywhere. Based upon our recommendation, a planter was added here. Then when they appeared before the planning commission, again, the planning commission discussed enhancing this facade by adding a planter on this site too. So the applicant added the planter and showed it on one sheet, but the rest of the plan sheets remained unchanged. So I'm sorry to scroll this way, but they submitted an update which showed just the planter over here, but the rest with an updated rendering over here, but the original renderings were not updated. So the plan set that is in the packet includes renderings from when the project first came, the first iteration and the second iteration, which Commissioner Gasson is correct. It creates a little bit of confusion as which is the final version being presented. I believe this should be the final version that is being presented. And when the applicant has noted that the building is from property line to property line, it is understood that the projecting metal coping, all of it needs to be within the property lines only. As was mentioned, permitted projections are when a projection is permitted to extend into a required setback area. In this case, in the central business district, there are zero setback requirements. A building can be built property line to property line. So in essence, all portions of the building need to be contained within the property line itself. So that is the basis for, for the review. But I do understand the concern expressed by Commissioner Gasson that there are multiple sheets, all of which have slightly different iterations, it's just that they are all from different sets but submitted together as one packet.
I had a couple other comments. The, the planner mentioned the three foot on the west side is an easement on neighboring property, neighbor's property. And I assume that's for utilities or something?
Yes.
Do you have a, an easement agreement for maintenance purpose on your building if needed or even direct to the city, should they have one?
I think the three feet's on his property, right, Vidia? Is it?
No, I believe the three feet is...
On their property?
...a piece. Yeah, I think it's on the neighbor's property because the electrical meters are attached to the neighbor's building, so the neighbors, that is the neighbor's, yeah, so the applicant might need a maintenance easement for that west wall. Typically handled during building permit review process.
Okay. And then just one other comment, I think in the report, uh, it sounded like there was a lot of conversations trying to come up with what I thought was a really nice accommodations for parking or accessible parking and I assume that's in process?
Yes, sir.
For the city, that sounded like a really great meeting of the minds there. And so I am, I'm left with questions. I'd like to understand what the commission feels about this. I think there's two items, site plan and then the pay in lieu of. And I'll say now we have a two point one with this new thing we have here. Uh, I'm gonna introduce that in a minute, but I wanted to cover your comments on the site plan and how you wish to move forward.
I'll start, if that's okay? So, thank you for coming back in. And you might want to stay up because people might have questions for you. Yeah, that was, yeah, I didn't mean for, to excuse you, yeah. No, I appreciate you coming in and I appreciate the work that you guys have done and this is, um, this is a very deliberative process and I, and I understand there might be some frustration on your part, but we're trying to get it right up here, okay? I promise you. I'm gonna focus on the parking issue right now just because I think that was the reason that it was tabled last time was for us to look at the numbers and make sure. Based on the information that was provided by you, Jeremy, and by the city, I should say, um, I feel comfortable with those numbers. I would have liked to have seen Saturday and Sunday, you know, and maybe just put everything out there so everyone can see, but based on what you've told me preliminarily, I feel comfortable with the, with the parking in lieu proposal. But I will say that we should probably really start thinking forward about where that saturation point is moving forward because sooner or later, it's a zero-sum game. We're gonna run out of spots, we're gonna run out of places. But I think right now, based on the information that was provided in the packet, the numbers seem to work out. Okay, so those are just my comments strictly on the parking. I'll talk about site plan later on.
To keep that going, is there any other comments on parking?
I have some.
Yes.
So I, um, different than Commissioner Hauser, I, um, am not in favor of allowing the payment in lieu of the thirty spaces. As I've said previously, I think thirty spots is meaningful, it's a larger number than we, that I have ever seen on the commission, doesn't even get close to what we've seen previously, I think. And, um, while the report, in my opinion, I agree, it doesn't necessarily show that we're at saturation, it doesn't show all the numbers. Um, and then I also think it sets though a precedent for future developers to acts, ask for similar exceptions. And if we continue to grant them, eventually we will, um, you know, lead to a cumulative impact that's gonna degrade our downtown parking and accessibility. I think the parking requirements specifically are designed to preserve really the character and functionality of our downtown area. And waiving those parking requirements then kind of undermines those goals and our ability to shape the downtown development in the way that really serves our long-term goals and objectives. And then I think allowing the payment in lieu of, which we might get to here, also discourages then developers to, um, explore alternative parking options or design options. And I think we're missing opportunities then to implement innovative developments that fit our requirements and projects that would really benefit the entire downtown area. So for those reasons, um, I just think it's prudent to encourage developer to find solutions that align with our requirements and, uh, the community's parking and accessibility needs.
Thank Commissioner Clouge. Any others?
I would just, like, um, similarly, um, I, I was a little disappointed to see the, the parking report not include the weekend and evening hours. And, uh, my concern is that if we do, we don't know where the saturation point is. And, um, I would hate to hit that unexpectedly and, and whether this project does or not, we don't know. But once it gets hard for people to find parking downtown, it, it diminishes the quality of development that we have, that people won't come. And so that's where I kind of am right now, that I, I think that it's, it is a big ask and it's, um, something of this scale, we should, should all have a better idea of where that point is before, uh, moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy. Any others to add on?
Are we voting on this?
Nope, I'm just, we're, we're going through, the parking is a, a topic right now. We, we can handle it as a separate motion and deal with, we should do that before we do the site plan, reverse wouldn't work too well, but I'm fine with if, if someone's ready to make a motion or ask for additional information, however you want to put it.
Yes, I, I, I'll just say that, you know, it, it, it seems like we, we haven't figured this out yet and it's almost like first come, first served. And it's like, that doesn't seem like a, a, a way to run a city, I guess. It's like, it seems like we should have what we want, we figured it out, we, we figured out how we're gonna do all this. And yes, we, you know, thank you, Jeremy, for this, the study, but I mean, it was a pretty basic study and so we don't really know exactly. So again, so the next person comes and says a hundred and twenty? Well, how do we, you know, we say no to that because we don't, you know, you know, we're, you know, we need to have this figured out, I think. And I know it's not fair to the applicant necessarily because they want to get going on this, but it seemed like in the planning process, if we don't have this figured out, then we're just making it up as we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? I think, um, based on the, how this would work, the site plan requires parking. Parking is a big question, I think we should handle that as a separate item first and then we can proceed. Uh, I think we didn't talk enough about the site plan to have some ideas of, you know, our still remaining concerns with it, but I think we can't go forward with that till we hurdle the parking.
So, if I can ask a question?
So just from a procedural standpoint, I think you're absolutely correct, is that if there's no payment in lieu of, you know, the parking, there's no conversation on site plan? So we should, yeah, I would agree, yep.
If I, can, can...
Yeah, um, I guess the issue of parking and saturation and whether we should say yes or no to their request, I, I guess I'm, I'm losing something. There's only so much development we can do in the downtown area. And from what I see, most of the property is built. So if you follow that assumption, there's not a whole lot more building that's gonna go on. If anything, the existing buildings are gonna be torn down and perhaps built up. But if that doesn't happen, I, I just don't see that many, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily know if there is room for a development that can come in and say, I need a hundred parking spots. And that's what I'm struggling with is, is are we trying to, you know, put a limit on something that we may, may never get to?
That was, that was just off the top of my head, that number.
I understand, but the, the point is, but, yeah.
And I think there's a, a great point, but there's a lot of what ifs. You know, there's some parking lots right now that could be developed and that would take up current parking, right? The, the re-walled property along Second Street, not saying there's anything happening there, but there is developable land that could require parking. The other thing I see, uh, like we looked at today earlier, is that there's grandfather parking for certain establishments that change use and then we have to create parking, um, because of that or create, you know, designated parking. So there's, there's ways that parking is gonna be an ongoing issue. I think the development part becomes, when do we need a new parking level, parking deck on, uh, or something like that? Yes, Mr. Chair?
You know, I, I had a thought, it, it's kind of, you know, none of us have a crystal ball sitting up here and none of us know what's gonna happen in the future, so we can't necessarily say, okay, well, I've got ten for this guy, I've got fourteen for this person, I'm, you know, so it's very fluid. And, and I, I think we're all kind of struggling to understand, say, hey, listen, where's the endpoint? Where is, you know, that, that demarcation line where you say, okay, enough's enough? But, um, you know, I, I, again, this is just my view, looking at the numbers and based on, um, what was presented to us, yeah, it does fit. And so do we not encourage development at this particular site because we don't know what's in the future? And I think this particular site presents its own set of challenges for, it's never gonna have onsite parking, would that be correct? It's fifty feet wide, so you're never gonna have onsite parking. And so whatever goes there is likely gonna have to require parking in lieu, would that be fair?
Unless they just build a one-story building that...
Right. But the economics of scale probably would preclude that, that they've gotta go vertical. So I think as we sit here, this particular spot is very likely gonna be more than one story. It's very likely always gonna require parking in lieu of. So, again, that's, I, I appreciate the tug of war that we're having here because this is it, but if we, if we say no, which is certainly something that can happen, does it thwart future development at the site because they're gonna say, well, I'm never gonna get parking in lieu of, or I'm only gonna get through spaces and I can't build something sustainable or frankly economical to justify the expense in development? Those are just some comments that I've got on that one.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser.
Sure.
Okay, if there's nothing more to add to the conversation on, I think we really need to, you know, pull this to a point. I'll leave the, the back door to this is that we could ask for more information. I mean, I, we have questions right now, obviously, I've heard them, but maybe there's more information. There's, like you're saying, there's something on the on-ramp right now for monitoring parking, which is gonna take time?
Yeah, the, I mean, we could always extend the study, like what we did for this one, but I don't know when the GIS prototype, I, it's not even complete yet. So if he finishes this week and then, I don't know how long it's gonna take for us to get the bugs out, give it enough information to even get the data in a usable format. Like I said, the data that we get from the current, um, parking decks is in a very raw form to where you can't just print it and hand it to somebody.
So it's not right around the corner. Maybe it's a, similar to what we've done so far, but just nighttime. Maybe that, that added information, I don't know if that'll appease our concerns, but I'm trying to see a little bit into, you know, how do we look at everything in the future, not just as one project, but that's before us right now. And I'm willing to take a, a motion in some form for what we do, whether it's tabled, accept, deny.
I have a question.
I see that you have your hand, we're gonna get to you, sir.
Um, this does have to go to city council for approval?
No, it doesn't. If he wanted to write a check for thirty thousand dollars, and he did at the last meeting, said he would do that, he didn't need a parking agreement. So it would not have to go to city council.
The count on the garage, can't we count by the arm frequency of it, of exits?
Yeah, that's the data that's not as digestible in just like a handed to you format, to my understanding, I have not, that's just what I've...
Wouldn't they give you the council on the weekends and at night?
Well, the problem is you've got, um, parking passes in there and a one-hour free, so it's just, you go to the deck, it's sixty percent vacant all the time until, even in the evening. So if you ever go on the top and bottom, it's, it's this, this field, when you've got the data, it's what everybody in staff that's familiar with that, it, it justify exactly what's there. So we can get the data, we, we cannot count in the next three months because of big bright light shells and we can't design the system around big brights for thirty some days. So you'd wait until this, well after January to start counting and again, we'll do whatever you want us to do.
I just, I did a little look at the site plan document that we have, the one of one sheet, and I did a quick count on the spaces physically, thirty's a number, right? But when you look at it physically, it, I think it's the whole north half of that parking lot is thirty parking spots. If, I, I don't have the full view of it, but...
And highly unlikely they would use that even during the restaurant.
North half of the parking lot.
Oh, of that parking lot?
Yeah.
It's the deck, this, kind, the reason we approved the Chapman, and again, I'm just telling you facts, the reason we approved the Chapman house because the deck was right there, right kitty corner from the street. The reason this gets significant impact on the lower lot, that, that's filled up with the chop house and everybody else, so I don't think it, there's eighteen percent vacant there. It's the deck that doesn't get used and that's his front doors across from the, where you come out of the deck, when you come out the sidewalk, it's right there, so...
Same thing with the Roxy too.
Right, and that's why the Roxy was because of the deck, not because of the brunch house lot or anything else. Those were full, um, in the evening, but the decks weren't. That's why we built the deck. That's why we built the decks and where we put them strategically.
We did what, 67 for the Roxy? Or 60, 57?
And then the one next door just got approved for six, the, um.
But those are already existing buildings.
Right, no, no, I got you, yeah.
Same thing, this, this is not an existing building, but there was an existing building there that had a parking count that went with it.
Mr. Mayor, do you recall the, drawing a blank on the name of it, but the restaurant, the, the big restaurant that was put up 10 years ago?
Chapman House?
Chapman House.
Yeah.
Wasn't there a requirement to have some kind of shuttle service or valet as a component of that?
Because we, the decks weren't there, so we didn't, they were just getting built and we didn't want them to overwhelm that because they, they turned, I think if I remember right, 350 plates a, a night. So we didn't want them in there, so we forced them, you're right, to have valet parking offsite.
Yeah, it's just.
It's interesting.
A tidbit. Okay, Commissioner, we have a challenge here, we, we need to move forward, so I'm looking for a motion. Unless there's more continuing thought.
Just one more comment, sorry, thought is, you know, we have mentioned the Roxy a couple of times, I do think that's a different situation. I also think, um, that the Roxy feels like something that was adding significant value to the city. It was something that was very unique, they're keeping the building, renovating it, providing entertainment, which is something we don't have in downtown. So to me, it felt, it feels like a different situation. I wasn't on the planning commission during that time either, but it feels like it is a different situation where I don't feel like downtown lacks office buildings or restaurants. I guess I, it's hard to separate the parking and the project in some regards too. Because I, I think you could be compelled to see the 30 spots differently if there was something unique coming to the space, innovative coming to downtown that really, the ROI was there, right? And to me, I don't know if I see this project as, as compelling.
If I may, I might say to the restaurant, you could say a restaurant's a restaurant. Office, we want office downtown because they're here during the day and they go to lunch, so we don't have enough office. Whenever we get parked, doesn't leave the campus ever. 280 employees never come into downtown. So we encourage office because we want them here during the day. So restaurant, I can understand, but not office. Offices, try to get as much office as you can because it has a lower parking count, they're here for the whole day, parked in a spot. Usually they'll buy a permit and we can get them as far away from the good parking as possible. So I would agree on a restaurant, you could say, is this restaurant something we need in town? Don't know because we don't know the restaurant yet, but that I don't have a comment on. Office, we want to improve that.
Ms. Clausen, one thing I recall from the Roxy was, there was an argument, or a position taken that people that are going to the Roxy are already coming to town for dinner. So they're going to park there anyway and they're going to do that while they're here. So it was kind of like a two-for-one. Hey, I don't know how much credit went into that thought, but that was one of the propositions made. Commissioner Herr.
Sure, Mr. Gaston, so at the last meeting, we kind of ran into the same situation where it was kind of like, okay, we've got this moment here. We want to make a decision, but I think there's still some more information that we needed. And rather than make a motion, would there be consensus to say, city, we would want weekends, we want evenings information based on this parking deck availability? And maybe table, it's not necessarily a motion, however the, the format or procedure wants to be. But I would feel, I, I feel good, but I think I would feel better if I had the information on the weekends and at night. Just so everyone had a full 24/7 view of what the capacity and use of that parking deck. And I have no reason to disbelieve the numbers that are represented, but I think for, for purposes of transparency, so everyone can have an idea, that's probably what I would want to see, and I don't think that would be too much of an ask.
And on the tables, I have a line.
And then also fix the site plan approval.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman brought up.
So if that's a motion, I'll take a support or you could refine it.
I have one more question, this is for Nick. Mr. Banda, of all the developments that are in the central business district, is there currently a number of what the required number of parking spots should be?
Yeah, I think I gave it to you last week, I can find it again here.
While he does that, um, so I'm looking at 8:00 AM, 12:04 with 6:08 and be, be okay, or how late do you want?
Well, let me ask a question to the applicant. This will be a restaurant on the first floor, correct?
Yeah.
What would your hours of operation be? I'm not holding you to it just to, you know what I'm saying, but conceptually, what would your hours of operation be?
Probably four to, you know, 11.
Okay, so I think we should have something in there at least until 10, you know what I'm saying? So because if it shuts down at eight and they're open until 11, three more hours.
So do six and eight add after the 4:00 PM?
Okay. And then one other thing, I'm sorry Jeremy, I don't mean to pile on with you. When you give us this information, is it possible to kind of give us a list of the businesses in town? And they have which parking in lieu, is that something, is that?
Yeah, they're.
Is that too, and I'm, and I'm not trying to be pedantic.
We don't have records from before and there's, we could get darn close, we have a list.
Okay, just something to give us an idea, so if we go up and down Main Street or on University, we could say, okay, I've got four here, six here, 12, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
And, and that doesn't have to be incredibly scientific, but.
Commissioner Cuzik, did you get your questions all answered?
No, I can answer it. So if everybody had their own parking, we need 4,000, 008 parking spots. Everybody had no parking, that's not giving them credit for two behind their billing. We only have 1,844, so we're short right now, today, 2,164 parking spaces every day, all day long, by the ordinance. And we still have vacancies in our parking lot. So again, there's so many factors that go in there, but I'm sure this is what you would need, it would be 4,008.
If everybody was there at the same time.
Yeah.
And just roughly in your opinion, how much space is available for future development?
I think Mr. Gaston said it would be the backfill of the, people taking more intense uses like Fieldstone, good example, from retail to office. So you can get something built on the, the cleaner's spot. And remember, they were asking for 58 parking spaces. And we wouldn't support that because there's no place to get them from, they'd have to go down the hill and across the field. So, um, we would hope like no one's tearing buildings down to build a parking lot or a building. None of the buildings on Walnut East Water, so it could, the only place you could park underneath it was on water because of that grade drop. Other than that, you'd have to build buildings on stilts, would now would not fit into the character of the neighborhood. So, um, there's not a whole lot of, other than Rewald's big lot, but he'll have to park that on his own, which he always planned on. Down in the core, in the CBD, it's change of use that's going to trigger higher parking needs, not new buildings.
Right now, there would potentially be a need for, let's just say, 4,000 for, you know, easy math. And we have a capacity of 1,800. But even that 1,800 is nowhere being fully utilized.
Correct.
Yeah, the east deck was on average 29% parked for 10 days during the week.
I, I don't care about one deck, I'm talking about the.
In general, yeah, but.
And we'll, once we get this data, then we can get the whole city and let you know.
Yeah.
Our goal was 38% during the day.
So again, 40% of 1,800, you're talking about 720.
Kind of begins to give us an indication of what saturation is.
That's what, yeah, and to me, it seems like we're well short, well short.
But you know, just another question is. But it sounds like people won't park in the parking garage. Right? So if that's, you know, do we have to take that into consideration? It's there, but people aren't going to use it.
If forced to, they probably would. You know, if there's no spots, where else are you going to go?
I don't know, but I mean, if it's that empty.
Yeah, I, I think when we do the study in the winter, when you have, if you're on the ground level, you want to park there because you're getting stolen your car. The upper level is just like a surface lot, same with the west deck. Nobody uses the upper deck until there's an event. Literally, anything that has, doesn't have a roof over it, but the other ones get covered, so it's human nature, you're right, Mayor.
So I will make a motion to table this so the city administration can provide us with the parking data that we've requested. And that would be specifically the longer hours of operation as well as the weekends. And to the extent that you can, provide us a listing of, of the outstanding or, or the current parking in lieu of.
Is the tabling for the application as a whole?
I would say so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it makes sense to my brigade.
I just wanted to be sure. I'm, I agree. Ms. Cuzik.
Before we, we make a motion, may I ask the applicant, can you afford to wait any longer?
Not really, I mean, we paid the, the property pretty good money, to be honest with you. And we would like to move forward. We would like to have a yes or no, because otherwise, you know, that we had to figure something else, you know, obviously. So tabling, again, it's like dragging another month and for us, it's only, it costs us money.
It'd be longer than a month.
Oh, yeah, we can't, we can't do a study during big bright light show and that's coming up in two weeks.
Yeah, because it'll skew the numbers, oh yeah.
Asking to the applicant, asking for yes or no is a serious question, based on what you hear us talking about. And that's just the parking element, we haven't really dove deep into the site plan. I don't want to venture to guess for you, but there's serious concerns in my mind that the material submitted is not ready for approval.
Well, we, we did the changes on the look, obviously, the only things that maybe we have to adjust is the dimensions. But, you know, we, we can, we could ask for approval as, you know, condition to the, you know, obviously, the, the fit, the, the building in the property line.
There's a lot there, so I'll go back to my first question, do you really want a yes or no?
I, I was under the impression that this was the last, uh, time that was, could be tabled. Uh, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm saying this wrong, or is it?
Yeah, we were talking about, we have a certain date, but as long as we're in deliberation, we can keep tabling, so. If we didn't, if they just didn't want to take a vote, just because they didn't want to take a vote, that's different. But they're asking for more information and so that would legitimately allow the tabling, so.
Because if we didn't take a vote, it would be 60 days, I believe, right? And it would be automatic, yeah.
With tabling, you, if you have the material available, and the city does, we could come back as early as next month. But Nick, you're saying based on other events, that's not impossible.
Yeah, I don't, there's so much going on the next couple of weeks, you're not going to get a pure count on that deck, if that's what you're looking for. We could this week and.
I mean, can't the next, not, not to put, not to make Jeremy work at night here.
Yeah.
We could do this week and next week, that's about as far as you're going to get, the first Monday, it'll be skewed. That's fair. And then easy to change the drawings by next month, so you could table for 30 days. If you would accept that short period of time, we'll do it every day. We don't have to just do Tuesday, we can do every day for the next 14 days and that would give you, that's, that's our, we can do that.
Wouldn't that give you the worst case scenario too, with the bright light show and people showing up unexpectedly?
Yeah, there won't be any left anywhere.
But at least you would see the spike and if they're staying away from the lot, like was previously mentioned, or utilized.
That's true.
The councilperson Stone's, um, point, saying if, if we know what zero capacity looks like, and that is at Christmas time when you can't move down there, you know what I'm saying? So that's like the worst case scenario, so I, I, I think that's fine, the more you give us, I think the better for everyone.
Yeah, we can go right up to the day of the meeting, so, and then you get a little bit of both, so that's fair. Police officers will do that, so they're here, so.
Well, and I was just going to say, you know, I'm, I'm not saying what I'm going to vote, but the applicant deserves a vote.
Absolutely.
You know, so I'm sympathetic to that.
Absolutely, we want to, we're here to serve that, the purpose of him.
Right.
Making it submittal, just want it to be, you know, an outcome you're going to be happy with, for one, but one that we can be comfortable giving you.
Yes, yes, sure.
I think we have half of a motion.
Support.
Yes.
And it's for the full, tabling of the full submittal, so.
Yep, right.
Any questions on that?
Well, so in the motion, are we, are we asking for anything back in a month besides the parking data? Are we asking for site plan corrections?
Absolutely, yeah.
And what else are we asking from the site plan? We talked about some design element changes the applicant agreed to. Do we want to see those, is that necessary?
So the, actually, the renderings have them so that he can look at what the final answer is, so when we're done, that's what you get. The two herringbone sides, anything else?
It should be an agreement across the board, from a site plan to a floor plan to an elevation to a 3D image. It shouldn't be a question in our mind of, which one does it really mean? They should all be the same. Right now, they're not.
Yep.
Right, and do we need to specify what the things we discussed tonight that should be in this, the site plan? Update, correction?
We've got it, so it's the, it's the herringbone, yeah, I.
I don't think so, but I would encourage the applicant to stick around and hear what else we're going to talk about when we talk about this.
Okay.
Okay.
So if there's no further questions, we're going to call that motion to a call. Roll call please.
Gaston.
Yes.
Houser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Clausen. Kenjuk.
No.
Murphy.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Okay, so hopefully we will get your information back, or the city will. And information will be prepared in a timely way that we can be back here again next month.
Okay.
Hopefully. We do have something interesting here, folks, and I'm going to do something a little bit out of the ordinary, it's not an agenda item, but we have it. It's relevant to what we just talked about. Could you come explain to us on this? And if anybody has any opinion about this before I open it up, let me know about doing it or not doing it.
I just have a clarifying question, is this, I don't think we've had a public hearing on this, so is that what this is right now?
You only have to have one, so we did one ago.
I'll be quick, I'll be really, real fast. Could you do your name and address for us, please?
Scott Beaton, 655 Ballinger Street, Rochester Hills, Michigan. Just the right across the border. I'm only going to grant one of these, I don't want to take a lot of your.
Scott, I want to give you enough time to cover what you've done, it's obviously a lot of work going into this, but if you could, just keep it narrowed into the points you want to make, that'd be great.
I'd be more happy to. Just to clarify, I've spent the last 30 years attending planning commission meetings. I did serve on the Rochester Hills City Council, I did serve on the Rochester Hills Planning Commission. I'm very aware of McKennan Associates. I'm aware of the process and I sincerely thank your time to start off with. This is a gift. And when I do a planning commission meetings, whether I'm in Royal Oak, Michigan, Birmingham, Michigan, I mean, I get around. And I show illustrations that I think may be a better solution and sometimes I luck out. And the applicant goes, wow, that's okay, no problem. And some, most of the time, that doesn't happen. But I want to make really sure that you know that this is definitely a gift. And I'm gifting it to the applicant tonight. About a 35 hours worth of work, I don't have any magic button on my computer that prints elevations, building to sides. It's drawn in Photoshop, which is a program I'm pretty good at. I don't have any architectural programs. And it was a lot of fun. I mean, it was a very, very challenging piece. This actual piece of art is six feet wide. It's drawn perfectly at one inch to a square foot, I mean, one inch to a foot. And it's drawn at 300 DPI. And I literally took the time to figure out where every single brick goes and where every single little piece of wood goes. And I had a blast. I, I really did. And it could be very, it's a 20, I'm sorry, it's a 60 by 40 foot building that fits perfectly on the site plan. The only variance that the applicant would be asking for, obviously, is something that was done in 1865 in Paris, France, by Eugene Hausmann, Nicholas Dupree, I've been to many of his meetings. He is the planning director for the city of Birmingham. And they actually don't want to take away valuable office space from developers. And they do allow, in the city of Birmingham and many other upscale communities throughout the country, to allow balconies to extend three feet into the right of way. And they also allow awnings to extend three feet into the right of way. Now, why does Nicholas in Birmingham do this? Because Nicholas feels that when you embed balconies deep into buildings, you create black holes. You push the glass into the building. And he feels that, and many architects feel you want to push that glass forward. So when the sun hits the building, you don't have holes. And I actually have seen around the city of Rochester, balconies that are buried into buildings and a lot of dark holes. So that's the only variance. Everything else here is to the tilt of your ordinance. I know there's a conversation, it's called fringe zoning. This is not in fringe zoning, this is in the central business district. This little tiny 40 by 60 foot lot. This little tiny forty by sixty foot lot is literally in the central business district. You spent a hundred thousand plus dollars with McKenna and Associates to develop a master plan for that district that has a fairly extensive list of things you would like to see on building facades. And I know, sir, you cannot regulate building facades by ordinance, but you certainly can stand up in court if you spend a great deal of money with a planning consultant to create a master plan and then get enormous support from your residents that you really are trying to discourage within just the central business district, which is a small precious business district in Rochester. It's your historic district. It was built late, or I mean, it was built early nineteen hundred. That you want to preserve that character. And your document goes into great detail about decorative parphises, decorative conuses, columns, pillars, decorative brick material. And this building actually does that. It does everything your master planning asked for. Um, what's fun about this building is it's not mine. I'm a graphic designer. I've won many awards. I got a whole closet upstairs full of awards for graphic design. I'm not an architect. I know a lot about architecture. But this is basically Albert Kahn. This is a nineteen hundred, early nineteen hundred Albert Kahn building. Now, Albert Kahn has been known as the architect of Detroit. He is a genius. He diva, he designed many, many beautiful buildings in Detroit. And this building now has providence to the region. Most modern buildings don't have providence to the region. This one does. It's not an exact replica of an Albert Kahn, but it's darn close. And people would fall in love with this building immediately upon its construction. People would go, fall in love with this early nineteenth century building. Albert Kahn invented the factory, invented the Mariner Day factory with these windows that have actually, they, they flip open. You've seen them. Um, there's a whole story about the, the birthplace of the assembly line. There's a whole story here with the birthplace of the Model T. And I think he would have no problem selling it.
I think he's seen it for the first time tonight.
If he put Albert Kahn on that corner.
Scott, can I interrupt you for a second? I, I don't think he's seen it before he, he walked into the meeting either. He, he may love it. I, my first reaction was it's really nice.
It's, he.
And again, I, I don't want to cut you off from your points you want to make, but I do want to keep it narrow. If you could kind of.
I'm almost done.
Head to the finish line?
Almost at the finish line here.
Thank you.
So this gift to him and to Nick and to yourselves is, I think, a more sellable building that would cost exactly the same amount as the modern one. So again, it's a freebie. I would love to see him build it. He'll put these post, uh, I'm gonna give him my Photoshop documents or the biggest this closet? I, I got them at home and I'll, I'll give him, I'll give him tonight this flash drive right here, right here in my hand.
Well, you came prepared.
He can put them in the recite, he can have them in the site plans by next week, I mean, by next month. Seriously. Um, I have been very literal to his floor plans of this design. I have moved the door on the south side literally two feet. That is the only thing I've done, uh, changed between what he is presenting and what is here, so.
Thank you, Scott. I think everyone can appreciate. Honestly, you did a really nice job. So I thank you. Um, and hopefully the applicant will see some wisdom and excitement in what you've done.
I, I, Tom would fall in love with this building like in two seconds.
It's, it's really nice.
It really would. And, and he would lease it out in two seconds. I, I do want to ask, I, I want to ask for just one more minute of your time.
Go ahead and close it up.
I want to close it up. I want to defend him. Now, it's difficult to swallow a modern building in a central business district. But I think his original vision came in with a very good idea. I think the metal that we've been talking about all night long should not be painted rust brown. I think that's a horrible color. Look up at thirty-five feet of, rust brown means decay. I don't think this man should trim out his building in beige. I think, again, that's a horrible color. I mean, beige is not a really well accepted color, okay? So, and these aren't coming from him. These are coming from recommendations from McKenna and Associates, et cetera, okay? To try to soften the look of this building. This modern building that he originally proposed with a pearl white metal facade that mirrors with the glass could be really pretty. It could be a really pretty modern building in your central business district. One of my best fans is Errol Seren, okay? He was a mid-century modern architect. Now, if he, instead of, you went in the wrong direction. You tried to match the brick to the facade instead of the facade to the brick. If he went with a brick that was a light gray that glossed, he would have, he will create a building that maybe is not as pretty, but pretty darn close to the, as pretty as the buildings at the GM Tech Center. I can, I'm, I'm almost done. I can see that one wall, that one wall that faces west. Okay, that you want to put some kind of fake windows on, okay, in different colored bricks. I mean, I, I don't mean to be so harsh. But that's, I mean, that's what's in the packet, okay? He did not ask for that. He asked for a modern building in your central business district. If you were to take that one wall, which is thirty-five feet tall and sixty feet long, and glaze it like Errol Seres glazed his buildings at the GM Tech Center, that thing at sunset, that one wall that has nothing on it, absolutely nothing on it whatsoever, would be stunning.
Okay, we're gonna close right there.
It, no, it will.
Last word, stunning. So this conversation.
It will capture the sun going down, the sunshine.
Please, you should continue this conversation with them. I think it'd be wonderful for you guys to come together and something. Do appreciate what you've done and shared with us tonight. It's really nice.
I, I, I appreciate your time too. I, I thank you for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, commission, uh, we'll receive and file this and nothing more than that needs to be done on it. Okay, um, let me get back to my agenda, which I timed out here. I think we're on to miscellaneous.
Uh, one more. Oh, it's on a miscellaneous, yes.
There was, um, zoning board appeals.
Yep, correct. So we're gonna need some help from you, Mr. Chairman, because you're on the zoning board. So, um, the way the zoning board works in this town, and it has since, I've been doing it for fifteen years, is if something comes up to them more than two times, the third time an item comes up, they all raise their hands and say, is there something wrong with the zoning ordinance that we're seeing three of these in a short period of time? So we've had three or four of those different items that kick back to the planning commission and ultimately city council. We have changed zoning ordinance um, requirements because of that. So lately, the last thing that's been coming back now is this carriage style garages. You guys want to go out there? Scott?
To the hallway, please?
Yeah.
That's okay. Um, so we had, uh, I think it was on our third time we've had someone come in and say, I want a carriage style garage. So for those that don't know that, um, it's the garages that, it's a side entry in the front of the building. So a little bit of history. So in, on the east side, that's normal. You have side entry garages in the front of the buildings, that's normal. So when we rewrote the ordinance years ago, because we were getting complaints about Ludlow. On Ludlow, if you drive down Ludlow, now halfway down Ludlow, on the left-hand side, there's an all-brick building that a gentleman built. He put his carriage style garage and he decided no windows on the front of that garage. So it's a blank brick wall and it's long. It's, it's twenty-eight feet deep. And uh, number one, it was all brick. Nothing on Ludlow at the time was all brick. Pretty much Ludlow's been more traditional Rochester front porches. Didn't have a front porch, very traditional building. Nothing the building official could do. It met the ordinance requirements for setbacks, et cetera. So that kind of triggered the planning commission at the time saying, we don't like these. So we went on a bus, if you remember, some of you went, we drove around town and looked and and we decided that in R one and R two, which is basically the west side of town, that we didn't feel it was appropriate to put a garage in front of a building. And that, it made good sense to everybody. And we've had only, we had two until this recent one come in to do that. And that was on First Street. And on First Street, you can see that the hill drops off very severely. So I'm going all over here, but there's a normal setback on a front yard is twenty-five feet. On First Street, none of those homes are twenty-five feet in the first couple of blocks off of the alleys. Because, um, the severe drop off. So they kind of pushed the homes up front. And the only way to get a garage on that was to have a side entry garage. So they, they, the building official denied it because it was a side entry garage. They went to the zoning board, had a hardship because the grades on the property gave them a, a window to say, there's nothing we can do. There's a, there's a very traditional looking home on First Street, looks like a Colorado condo. It's got two side loaded garages on it. So the precedent was set and they granted that waiver and then they granted one other one, um, because of the grades. So planning commission, I'm sorry, the zoning board said, we would like to recommend to the planning commission, would you consider reconsidering al- allowing carriage style garages and zones? Is it one, two, three, or just one, two? Just one and R two? Um, so that's what we're here for. We promised them that we would make that R. Then secondly, the reasons that, that allowed.
Nick, may I interrupt? So the, the, what we're really hearing is that they, they want to consider, or they want us to consider side entry garages at the front of the house.
Right, correct.
Not, not just carriage style, but.
Right, garage style. Yeah, I should, we call them carriage, but they are that. So, um, the other one that also proves on Wilcox, because there already one was, there one, there was one at the end of the street, Janetti's, and the second one went in before the ordinance changed. Then the third one couldn't get it by right. So they went to the zoning board and said, there's two right next to me, and the zoning board granted it. Um, so part of the argument also was, we've been talking about impervious areas, et cetera, and lot coverage. So by not allowing a carriage, a, a side entry garage in the front, you can have them in the rear. That's not a problem. The ordinance allows that. But you have to take a nine-foot ribbon or ten-foot ribbon of garage, sorry, driveway, all the way down to the back of the property. Put your garage in the back instead of the front. So now it's all impervious area, eliminates the people's backyard because it's all garage. So it, it was kind of a combination of not just saying that we don't, we don't understand why you eliminated them, but the ramifications that are, you get a lot more impervious area and putting them in the rear. So we said, we would bring it to the planning commission and see if there's any appetite for you to get into a deeper discussion about should you have them or not? Um, and we'd be fulfilling our obligation to the zoning board, which is fair, um, because they asked for that.
If I could just add a little more flavor to that, it was in the era of the Bigfoot House that was happening in, everywhere in town. And the, a motivation, and maybe it wasn't even the primary, was we didn't want to see all garage at first. Um, and part of the sensitivity was not just can't have side entry, but a garage fronting the street had to be four feet back from the primary face of the house.
Correct.
With a garage door of a certain size. If you went to a bigger garage door, you had to go back twenty feet. So again, the whole idea was to make the garage less of the first thing you see.
Yeah, and, uh, what happened is in the morphing of it, when we told people you're having a hard time with it voluntarily, we started saying, instead of that blank wall like on Ludlow, put windows and it looks like a, just a a win, it looks like the part of your home, you can't even tell it's a garage unless you looked at that angle, right? So that softened it a bit, but it doesn't say you have to do that. So that does create that.
So in this, uh, request or consideration, what would the format for us to do this? Would this be in a, just an ordinance language uh, modification that would come from McKenna? And all we need to do is the commission say, yes, bring us some information for us to consider?
I, I think that what the ZBA would do is just rescind the, rescind the ordinance that prohibits side entry from, garages, not write a new one.
So it's a, and it's an amendment to the current ordinance, and that would come from McKenna to the commission for consideration, public hearing, et cetera. Okay, and then there's this.
And to council, back to council.
And then back to council, obviously, radically. There, there's a second part to it regarding.
The grading. And I think it was the excuse, we couldn't get Cody to kind of explain that, but I think it was, people were using the condition of the grading to say that that's their hardship. And if you eliminate that, worrying about grade, then that takes away one of their arguments to say they can't do it. That's, that's what you get out of it.
Yeah, I think there is a, a little bit of that. You find every angle you can to try to get a variance, right? And I think that is part of it. And I think in the memo, it references twenty-one, one fifteen or twenty-one, one sixteen. And it's the opposite. So if commissioners were looking at it, they wouldn't find it. I think it's twenty-one, sixteen?
Yeah, one fifteen.
It should be twenty-one, sixteen.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Might be a fat finger.
It could, whatever it is. It's, it might be difficult for someone to understand the full context of it.
Okay.
So, um, to the commission, what I think what we're hearing is they, they want us to consider a modification based on some hardships that keep reoccurring. And for us, I think it's a matter of, okay, bring us something and we'll talk to it if that's, you know, a sense of.
What we could do is just like we did the first time, pros and cons, and then let you decide between the pros and cons.
Okay. Any, any thoughts, comments, questions on this? What's?
I think it's good to be taking a look at it.
Good.
As we get head nods, we'll bring it back.
Question. Nick, I believe you know where I live. Are you talking about the side entry?
So it's just the R one and two, which is basically from Main Street over on the west side. So and it's almost impossible to get one now unless you tear the house down. Um, on the lo, on the fifty-foot lots, you can't even get it.
But are the style the same?
Pardon me?
Is the style the same?
You, you need, um, no.
No, okay.
So it's when they were building, for instance, there's a hundred foot lot, somebody could do it there. You, on a forty, like my lot, you can't even get it on there. You need, there's two different parts of this. There's twenty-four feet for the garage. Then you can only have forty percent of the front of the home be garage, no matter whether it's front loaded or side loaded. So you couldn't even do it on ninety percent of the lots in town. So it seemed good to me, the way we, we did it, we eliminated them because we've only had three asks and they're on, Wilcox was extreme, um, ex- extremely unusual, yeah, unique, and so was First Street. So no one's committed to ask for it in the inner core of the streets around my house.
Well, Mr. Gasson?
Yes, video.
If, if I might just add, I'm just going to share my screen quickly. So I, I remember this ordinance amendment, the planning commission discussed this a lot before we came up with this graphic. And I think that was a result of, like Nick explained, the courtyard entry garages, which was like a long brick wall along the front edge. I think I still have some notes for when this went before the planning commission, multiple times before this design or this recommendation was approved. So maybe I can bring back some of the information you looked at previously to see if you would like to change it back. So you would know the history of why we adopted this ordinance in the first place because the planning commission put in a lot of work, lot, over many, many months to come up with this. So I will bring back all the information that I have from our last discussions, the memos. And the planning commission can provide direction on how we would like to go with it then.
I think that'd be a great idea. Maybe, uh, because it was a lot, maybe you can narrow it down to what you think is relevant for today. But, um.
Yes, I can do that.
I think that's a great idea.
And we have a number of new people on too.
We do. And there could be a different mindset. And even in council, same thing.
And there's lessons learned, because we've lived through some of what it has caused.
And we can show you, yeah, now we can literally go out and take pictures of what happened with the waivers and without the waivers and, yeah, absolutely.
Any more miscellaneous from the administration? How about from council or commission? Miscellaneous. Okay, oh yes, Commissioner Howser?
Um.
Miscellaneous?
Brownstones on Main. Uh, is he, is he gonna do the basements? So is he gonna, so is he gonna take care of that? Okay.
Nothing further. We'll go to public comments to wrap things up from the audience. Anything out there? Anything virtual, Rose?
Nothing online.
Okay, um, okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you.